Selecting meeting to order for January twenty-third, seven to one, all face selection of president. Town administrator here, Chief, Chair of the Conservation Committee, Chair of the Energy Committee, Leo Martel, Leo, the town clerk back there. Leo is taking and recording this and Lyndon Nickerson will upload it to YouTube and the town website. Thank you, Leo. Under old business, we're gonna pass off previous meeting minutes only because we had an illness with a girl that raised them up, so we're gonna move those to our next meeting. Any public comment that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, that being said, let's go right on to, um, town business here on our agenda tonight. We have appointment paperwork here for Fire Chief Brandon Scoglan, Scoglan, and also Brian Watford for the Old Home Day. I'll make a motion that we appoint Brandon Scoglan to as Fire Chief, and there's no ending term on that, this is a job that he has taken with the town. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Motion made second in all favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll wait. Motion made that one for Brian Watford.
I make a motion to appoint Donald Brian Watford to the Dunbarton Old Home Day Committee, term ending March twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second that.
No, term, term starting twenty-twenty-five, term ending twenty-twenty-five. Term ending March twenty-twenty-five.
So he's gonna be coming up.
We do him again then.
Just a short one.
Just reading the paper.
Motion been made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move the chief down. He's asked to go a little bit later, let's get a few of these other people ahead of him. Go down to Brett St. Clair from the Conservation Commission Chair for update on his dumping. No, she's gonna be asking.
Yeah, and I'm just here, this is just like an information appearance, I'm not asking you to make any decisions, do anything, you know, or anything like that, I just wanted you to be aware that we had a situation recently where we had four white plastic canisters dumped in the Waukesha Conservation Area. And they're probably, they were marked as being from Concord Hospital Sterile Supply. And so that was a little bit concerning as to, you know, what might have been in those. They were in a spot where we've had stuff dumped before over the years. It's been really good down there, we haven't had, you know, had problems for quite a while. But we, um, the police department got ahold of Concord Hospital, found out that the numbers that were on the canisters were pretty old, they didn't really know what, you know, what was up with them. But I also called Concord Hospital, talked to the Sterile Supply Department. They said that what they used to do with those things, they were plastic, probably held about fifteen gallons worth of liquid. That they would give them to employees after they were done with them, they'd wash them out, we could take them home if they wanted to, so it was probably nothing that was bad, but we were concerned about that. And so I just wanted to just to give you, we removed them, took them to the transfer station and so forth and that. But just wanted you to be aware that, you know, somebody did that, and it was just a weird situation because they were, it's somebody who didn't wanna be associated with them kinda, and having them be marked from the hospital, you don't know what the heck is, you know? So I just, just a heads up, there's nothing, seems like it was, you know, bad about them or anything like that, it was just annoying that somebody did that, but we're just afraid at some point we might have somebody drop off something that would, you know, whatever PCB barrels from some, you know, something like that.
We always, if you're familiar with Legate Kill Road,
about a half a mile up, there's a spot that's off the road where people used to camp. It's a, you know, kind of a hotspot, hasn't been, we had Jeff Crosby drop some rocks off for us that helped keep people from being able to drive in there as easily. I dropped some trees a while ago and I'm gonna drop some more. To keep people out, yeah, but, you know, it's been pretty good. We did have some people camping there for a while illegally back in two thousand twenty for maybe a couple weeks. But anyways, so any, just a heads up, that's all.
Thank you. Do you have any update on the England property?
Yeah, unfortunately, we hit a snag with that easement that Five Rivers was working on with the England family. Sue England sent a email to Rob Knight, who's been a volunteer, who's been working on that with them, after Thanksgiving, requesting that maybe it be put on hold for a couple years because her son was thinking that he might wanna do something there and was afraid that with the easement, he might not be able to do it. So anyway, what our plan is, is to meet with him in the spring. He lives in Colorado, so when he comes back in the springtime, we'll get together with him and his mom and probably his sister too, and see if we can, you know, see what his concern would be and, you know.
Maybe make arrangements for it.
Yeah, makes, whether he actually is gonna do something, and I think it may be just sort of loss aversion, I don't really know, but anyway, the, if they don't go through with it, our sort of position is that, you know, we're willing to work with them for a reasonable amount of time, but if they don't wanna go through with it, let's say within the next year, we would consider that to be an indefinite postponement. Doesn't mean they couldn't do it in the future, but she signed something that said she would have to pay back the money that we spent on the survey and the legal work and so forth.
So they have some invested, they, they.
Well, they don't have it invested, the town does, but they signed something that said that, you know, if they, Five Rivers knows what they're doing, if they don't go through with the deal, then.
That's smart, protects the town too.
Yeah, though it protects us and so forth, but I'm hopeful that it will.
Something will come.
Resolve it, I, I can, I can understand somebody who, you know, is just reading this legal document cold, it's pretty intimidating. Sue was all for it and, you know, she was fine with it, was gonna, they were almost at the closing, that was the thing, and then, you know, so anyways, that's where it stands.
Okay.
Be, yeah, kinda be, I don't know, he'll come home in the spring and we'll see what happens then, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
Yep. Okay, the next one on the agenda is the town clerk. Come on up, Jennifer.
Thank you.
We're putting you ahead.
I have, I have, Chief, he's on first.
We've got a couple of pieces of information for you here from the accessible voting equipment and also the one-for-all program, cause there's some fees if we use theirs, right?
Right, so I had mentioned at a prior meeting that the Hampshire State Legislature added a law that says that we need to use this one-for-all device that we have in the tent, that we've been using at state elections. We have to use that at town elections now too. So the first item is, we don't have a one-for-all. The state has one that they will loan to us.
So the one we use every year is one they loan to us?
Yes, and we return it every year right after the election, after each election. So they're saying they will loan it to us for the March election, it'll probably even come next week. And as soon as anybody signs the package saying, I've received this UPS or whatever delivery that's entering into this contract, that's probably at the bottom of the stack of those papers. And so the state is giving us a heads up that they're supplying it, we need to return it to them in the same packaging, et cetera.
Okay, and what's our cost of that?
Nothing.
Nothing on that election?
Yeah, there's no cost for the device itself, so that's the first contract in question. It's just saying, okay, we're receiving this loan of equipment and we're gonna return that in good condition, that sort of thing. As we have been doing, it's just now it's a contract because it's a town and school election as opposed to a state election.
And are we looking into buying one or we're not gonna have to worry about it?
So we are likely going, they're likely gonna go with a newer device that's being decided, there's different vendors they're looking at, we would need to buy one, but we've budgeted for that. And there's also a chance the state will be contributing or maybe even supplying the funds outright, hopefully at least partially, so hopefully.
So they haven't determined the vendor yet?
No, not that I've heard. I went to a, when was it, last month or earlier this month? They had a bunch of vendors in and I went, maybe it was December.
And what's the second half?
And so the second half is, there's the device and then there's programming the device. And we're not allowed to program it ourselves to accept the town and school ballots. We need to have the vendor do it, so that's a separate contract directly with the vendor saying that yes, we will pay them estimated six hundred dollars for the town election.
And for this, for the other big elections, we've never had to pay for it before?
Right, because the state programs them, and that's still included, you know, for the state elections, which we're not expecting any this year. So this is just when election is only town and school.
So the state law basically mandates we have to have this device for our local elections in addition to the state. State is already paid for in the past, but now since it's only local, we have to pick up the tab.
So my other, other question is, when do we get our own, are we still gonna have to pay somebody else to put that information in the system?
To program it, probably, I don't know yet, I guess it depends on the vendor and what the rules are, I think that's one of the.
I guess when we're shopping for them, we should check all that, cause that's gonna be a big key if it's six hundred dollars.
I remember with the, with the voting machines, the programming is always an extra added on.
Yeah.
And it changes every election. And so whether we own it or not, it'd be nice if the state could just keep loanless equipment, but if we gotta pay for the programming, so be it, but it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be determined on the new equipment, which, which one they pick.
You need our signature?
So we need your signature on, it's probably in the second packet.
Yep, which is what he has there, eight too. It's the programming one?
My signature, yours.
Doesn't matter.
Do you guys have any problem with that?
No, it's required.
Sounds like we have to, so.
Yeah, it's kinda you have to, but.
Don't paze me, bro, I mean, I gotta do it.
Right.
I figured I would check. We're a group of three here.
We gave you a sign, right?
I did. I'm on the hook for this year.
You spent the morning.
Can we just make sure we give a copy of something?
Yes, I was just gonna ask him, and he wants, can you talk me of the appointments or?
No, I believe he does.
Are those in the files or?
Jennifer, I have two questions for you. For you to, but the first one is, are you gonna post up on the board or something? The people that are gonna be running for town offices?
Ideally, yes, in reality, maybe not unless somebody's price it. I'm really far behind with other work, and since that's not a requirement, I have not done it.
The only thing that we noticed in the past is sometimes people will walk by, cause they're trying to let the public know. And if somebody's running, sometimes other people don't bother running and that type of thing. Right now, it would just be almost like hearsay if we don't have it somewhere, so.
Or they contact me.
That's what I mean, though, so a lot of, you know, people could.
If somebody comes to me directly or calls me, you know, they can, I can tell them who's running.
But it's helpful for the office staff to just to know if the.
I mean, you don't wanna be getting hundreds of phone calls about that and see if somebody's running, you know?
Ideally not, but the people haven't been breaking down the doors either, you know, so.
That's also the second thing.
Right.
Right, so we'll see, like I said, it's not, I've talked to other towns, that's how they.
Even if.
I can't speak for all towns, but I have inquired of some towns and that's how they do it.
Even if it's, even if it's on a sheet of paper, that their office can have to, say, if somebody walks into your clothes, they'll be able to tell who's running or who's not running, cause it changes people's, you know, some people say, oh, that's a really good person, I'm not gonna bother running.
Exactly, yeah, and they can reach out to me.
Or nobody's here and I'd like to run, you know?
Yeah, it's just I have to keep updating that every single day throughout the day.
I know, people are used to that, they've been on the board for a better than a year.
I have some, someone in the office has a nice penmanship of chalkboards if you want, some help. If you decide you want to put it out, just to take it off your desk.
Somebody who's in tomorrow?
Monday, cause you're not here tomorrow either, right?
No, well, I'll probably be working tomorrow. I'm not open.
I can check with the other end, but there's a couple people that have a nice penmanship for chalkboards.
No, somebody has mentioned it to me here and I said, well, if you're available to write on it, I don't have the time, so. You know, and once it's up there, I can update it, I have a picture from last year, so I'm all prepared.
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't wanna devote time to that one, it should be worth finishing the town report for you.
I got one of those to do too. The only other thing I've had is a couple people called me about Wednesday mornings. Wednesday morning, you close now, is that a permanent thing or is that?
No, it's not a permanent thing, it's a week by week thing, it has been semi-regular, I will tell you. And there'll be some weeks where I'm like, oh, I'm working, and then, oh, last minute, there is a meeting, you know, with this, all this election stuff. But some of the weeks is my personal thing and I don't have a deputy right now to cover any hours. I am working well over forty hours a week. And I'd have to be working, you know, easily over fifty a week to be open that much and do all the work.
I think, I think it's reasonable a little bit to be, because she needs the training.
Oh, yeah.
And we, you can't do a job without training, sometimes training is at the last minute.
Any news of a deputy?
Uh, nothing official yet, no.
And your other girl's still coming in some?
She's coming a few days a month, but that might change in March, so.
Okay, that's all, did you have anything else for us?
Not at the present.
Okay.
I wouldn't have come except these election things, you know, when they send a contract, I'm gonna deal with them, so.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, we'll get out, do you wanna hit, or you wanna wait for the solar panels? What do you think? You wanna come next or you wanna?
Sure, I can come, that's okay.
Let's bring you on up.
Seat's warmed up for you.
Yes, it is. And we're gonna discuss right now, I guess, the part-time wage on the certified for the officer?
Yeah, so on the heels of our discussion two weeks ago, I wanted to establish just a flat rate for a part-time officer that's full-time certified, because that will alleviate any potential concerns. I worked with lean today.
Did you guys get to see this? The amount in yellow on the second page of the graph.
I think it won't be easier having a flat rate?
Yeah, it's just cleaner, it'll still get COLAs if COLAs are approved. It's such a rare instance, it's not something we're gonna be using much, but I think in the interest of fairness, I think it's cleaner, and this is actually something that the fire service does. They have different pay rates based on your like EMT, BE, EMTA, or paramedic. This is kind of akin to, you know, you're a part-time officer, but you're full-time certified, you'll get this flat rate. We're not doing six steps or anything like that, it's just a nice clean flat rate, everyone's happy.
I think that will help.
I think it alleviates the, Dave, you had some concerns last week about where, where it would be, some people in the staff would be upset over that, and I think it alleviates all concerns.
Yeah, I think it'll help out, and for the benefit of the public, we have one of our full-timers that stepped down, and he's gonna be working some part-time shifts and hopefully staying on with us for a while. And so we wanted to try and keep his pay at his current rate instead of changing it down to the part-time pay since he's got all of his, all his credentials to be a full-timer. I think we'll do with the rate, do we need to make any motion on this rate?
We're gonna have to approve it, right?
I guess so. So why don't I make a motion on this, using this wording on here? Make a motion to establish a full-time certified, part-time.
Part-time certified.
No, full-time certified, part-time officer flat rate.
Okay, full-time certified, you're right.
Twenty-twenty-four rate will be thirty forty-two and the twenty-twenty-five rate after COLA will be thirty-one thirty-three. Subject, this will be subject to annual COLA if it goes on for more years than this, but it will not be subject to any step levels.
I second that.
Motion made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Okay, that part is done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You had another, um, information in here on the odd call stipend that we wanted to.
Right.
Review as well, which I did get a report from you, I think we probably had a chance to see this by email, and it was nice to see the number of calls, even though some were the, the same day and, and, but you can see how long a call lasts, sometimes it was four hours, you know?
Yeah, sometimes with one incident, you might have five or six phone calls throughout that incident. Sergeant Tyler just wanted to put that together, just to kinda highlight the duties and responsibilities that come with that. I know I had proposed thirty-five hundred up from two thousand. I gotta fall on my sword because in hindsight, I should have been increasing this year after year instead of doing a big jump. And I understand where the board's coming from, so I was wondering if the board would be amenable to twenty-eight hundred instead of thirty-five hundred for twenty-twenty-five, which would be an eight hundred dollar increase instead of a fifteen hundred dollar increase.
Split half?
I think that's more reasonable than thirty-five hundred.
So we're talking the overall amount, when you're talking thirty-five hundred?
Correct, yeah. That's a reduction from thirty-five, I think that's a reasonable.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would just bring full-time crime control down seven hundred.
Which is, which is part of his budget, so.
Right.
Nothing we have to make a motion on.
Right, but I do need the exact number for the.
Oh, I can send it to you tomorrow.
Oh, I see, so that we can get a wage form that we sign off on and make sure that's part of the, or even amend the pageage of that, your budget?
I can do that.
Because I give that to the bookkeeper so she can know what to disperse it. That's usually paid out twice a year?
Yeah, it's July and December generally. And I can send out all that information to you tomorrow.
Anything else for us, Chris?
That was it, thank you very much.
Can I just jump down to the mailbox at the bottom? I did add that there's been a PD recognition email from Chris. And he wanted the, the board to be aware, and I think you all got it in an email, that there was several thank yous, several fundraisers, response calls for a lot of the staff. And he likes to take the time to recognize the hard work his staff closed or. F on there.
Yeah, that's number four and five down here at the bottom.
All of them, there's a PD recognition.
I just like to pass those along, I try to batch them as they come in, so I'm not emailing them all the time, but I just wanna make sure the board sees and, you know, some of the recognition that comes in from the community and the good work that our, our guys and gals do every day.
Yeah, it is nice to see them and group them up does help too, cause we, like, every, every week or two.
Right, right.
But it was nice to see them go through them and, you know, there's a good side to a lot of things that happen in town, it's nice to see that part of it also.
Yeah, standing, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thanks for your call logs, do I always look through those?
Excellent, good.
And check those out, those are nice to have and nice to look at for records and.
Great.
See what's happening in town.
We added a, like a did you know section for twenty-twenty-five, so we're gonna highlight some topic each month. So January twenty-five is gonna go over like all of our training requirements that we have to do. We're trying to inform the community of different, different aspects of the police department they might not be aware of now, just try to educate people that way, so.
Any luck with any officers?
Uh, we have, right now, we have six applicants. We're gonna, none of them are certified, and we're gonna be holding a physical agility test in early February. So of those six, we will see who passes.
Okay.
So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for the.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
You're still to move some, just to be able to sign it.
Oh, yeah.
He knows.
Okay, going back down.
There's actually two things there that involve them, Community Power and the solar panels.
Yeah, so let's hit Dana Lavoie next. Dana and I have spoke with, well, he spoke with Community Power, but we've talked over the phone as we're on the Energy Committee and on the Selectment Rep. There's some new information out, and we think we should reprioritize group now. I'll let Dana speak to it and I'll fill in where I need to.
Okay.
Dana, you have the board.
Thank you, all right, Dana Lavoie, Chair of the Energy Committee. So we have a opportunity with our Community Power Plan, the Dunbarton Community Power Plan, to actually do a launch. Our recent rates out of Eversource and Unitil are still very good historically. We have Eversource coming in at eight point nine cents and Unitil will be around eight point three cents per kilowatt hour for the coming six months, that'll start February first. Community Power currently has an opportunity to get power procured at eight point eight cents per kilowatt hour. It's not a great reduction over the Eversource rate, but it is slightly lower. And there are certain requirements at launch that require you to get in only during a six-week period every six months to actually launch Community Power. And that six, six-week period was December fifteenth through the end of this month, which is coming up upon us. We, to implement this Community Power launch, we have a situation where we would be underwater on a Unitil customer in town. Currently ninety percent of the town is Eversource, ten percent is Unitil. Unitil coming in at eight point three cents, if we had an eight point eight cents Community Power, we would be underwater there, we wouldn't wanna force the Unitil customers to go to Community Power. We could give Eversource customers a tenth of a cent reduction for the next seven months on Community Power. So what we're asking for is in the Dunbarton Community Power Plan is we want to change one word, which is from shall to may.
On our contract, there we have.
On the contract for Dunbarton Community Power. And what that would allow us to do is to launch the program for Eversource customers as an opt-out program, so that's, that's the way that the program would work. So ninety percent of our customers would be in, we'd get all the postcards and everything saying, hey, we're, we're launching Community Power, you have the choice to opt out, this is the rate that you're being offered. And it would also allow us to not automatically include Unitil customers by changing this shall.
That's allowable.
To may, it is allowable if we make this change.
And, and they have like twenty-five people in a group, twenty-five towns, and twenty-three of them are already done this. What's the term of the contract, though?
It'll be about seven months, it'll go through the end of November. Right now, because we are in wintertime and the current rates are low because natural gas prices are still historically low, and that's where the majority of New Hampshire's power comes from, is natural gas. No providers are generally offering anything in what would, we would prefer is things like twenty-four months, thirty months, or thirty-six months, they're not offering that, they won't do it. Or if they do do it, it would be at a rate of twelve, thirteen, fourteen cents a kilowatt hour, which we're not allowed to launch underwater.
So the, the biggest thing, in rereading the letter that they had sent to us, I read it before Dana called me, and Dana called me and tell me that, you know, you'd just spoken for a couple hours with this lady. And the biggest thing is, if we launch now, we get into this buying group, like we said, we have a hundred thousand, what was it?
Yeah, it's actually a hundred gigawatt hours is what they try and do. So we, as a town, we, we procure or we use seven gigawatt hours a year, all of our residents and.
So seven percent. So by getting into this.
Seven percent of the, of the bundle, yeah, so the buying power, though, is a hundred, we're only seven of that. And there are, there are, in fact, I think it's eleven other towns that would be going with us here, and they've actually all approved, except for one. And the reason why the one didn't is they're fifty-fifty Eversource, Unitil, and they were like, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do it right now. So one out of twelve chose not to, and eleven out of twelve are going to launch, and we would, we would join those eleven other towns.
The biggest thing here is, I was against these short-term ones, but once we became a Community Power, when they go out to re-buy or get into a new buying group, we can automatically go to, for this initial time, you have to go through the PUC approval process, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and it has to only be during this six-week period here where they're starting up a new six-month.
So what would happen if we didn't get into this group, um the next buyout would be in June or?
Yeah, we'd have to wait till like July or August, um where the, when the next rates would start. And and I think where Dave is going with this is this is the key pe- piece, if we get in now, they can actually start pricing us. For the another longer term in April, May, and June, which are the three months that are historically the lowest bidding price for electricity. On a calendar year, April, May, and June are the lowest, generally the lowest months.
So if we skip this, we might be into a buying group that's more expensive, but by getting into this first group. We're automatically rolling into their new buying process.
And they will be instantly going out for bids starting in April um for a longer-term contract for us.
And of course, if if people want to, they could just opt out.
The opt-out option is always.
But whether they opt in or out, it's pretty much the same rate.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Go for it.
That's what my thought was too with Dana. Now we have to sign this.
So there are two, yeah, two things we actually need for business here tonight, one of them is we need to approve this motion, I have it here, I don't know if you've.
You don't.
You have it printed there.
Got a flag right there.
And it's just changing one word and that is a shall to a may. Or changes the word will to may, that's what it is. In one instance, and so that paragraph, which.
And those customers can, let's say in April, they negotiate a great rate for us.
Yeah.
My uh, those Unitil customers can join us anytime along the way.
Unitil customers can join in an opt-in scenario.
Anytime.
At any time. But our community power, under this, we will be, we will have eight point eight cents until November.
Okay, which is which.
We can't change that, in other words, we're s- we're signing up for eight point eight cents, which is a good rate.
Yes.
It's a good rate, E- Eversource people will save a tenth of a cent, it's 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 somewhat negligible.
And and the only risk we have is uh if Eversource drops their rate in July, we can always opt out and.
You can opt out, yes.
It's it's.
And we and we could notify the public if that was to happen.
Right. It's a it's.
It's unlikely they'll go below eight point eight cents.
It's it's no risk.
Yeah.
And so it it is a, becomes a no-brainer to sign up for.
You know, and uh what what's also notable is program, even with that rate, has between five and ten percent of renewable energy above the top or required.
It it uh among uh above the state requirement, state requirement right now is twenty, all utilities, anybody who provides power has to provide.
Twenty-five.
Uh twenty-five point two percent of renewable energy and that's no matter whether you're Eversource, Liberty, Unitil, or anybody. Um, as well as community power plans and our community power plan actually said we wanna do better than that from one to ten percent. And so our eight point eight cents will be with some more percentage than twenty-five point two of renewable.
So I'll read the motion Dana to the board, we'll make a official vote on.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion will be read to see if the board of selectmen will amend the Dunbarton Community Power Plans, section three. B, universal access, second paragraph, third line, to change the word will to may. In one instance, so it now reads, all retail electric customers will have access to the program, all retail electric customers. Receiving defaults, service supply from the electrical distribution utilities will be eligible for automatic enrollment. In the program, eligible customers and they may be automatically enrolled in the program unless they choose to opt out. All customers will have the right to opt out of the program at any time with no charge. Motion's been made, do I have a second?
I second.
Like seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Question? Just make sure that, yeah, hold on, just make sure that Jennifer gets a copy of that motion written there.
Yep, I will.
Okay.
Now that we're entering into this, will those postcards be being sent?
Yes.
And?
So so there's actually, there is another step which I'll I'll describe here now. So now that 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 has been approved, we are allowed to go to pricing. And we can go to pricing as early as tomorrow and I I will be notifying them tonight that we are part of the eleven towns that are going for pricing. And we will, we may hear as early as tomorrow a confirmation of of eight point eight, eight point one, eight point seven nine, whatever that ends up being. Cause this is like the stock market of oil or pork bellies or anything else, right? You you're, we're gonna get a a real-time uh quote tomorrow and I can then, I'll I'll communicate with Dave as to what that is. Assuming it's what we expect it to be, has to be below Eversource of eight point nine for us to launch. If it's below eight point nine, we will be launching and we'll we will accept the the contract.
If it's above eight point nine, the statute says we can't do it.
We cannot do it. Yeah, yeah, so we cannot launch underwater.
Okay.
Um, and once that occurs, they will then, there'll be two sets of postcards. One postcard to the Eversource customers will say, hey, we're enrolling you with community power, here's the rate, it'll have the specific rate. There, you ch- you can choose to opt out in these three ways, phone call, mail, um email, whatever the the uh or online options. Um, if you're a Unitil customer, you'll get a postcard that says that community power has been launched in Dunbarton, but you are not part of the program currently. Uh, because the rate is is above your Unitil rate of eight point three cents, um you can choose to opt in if you so choose.
Will will it be, uh, you have an expected rate, will it be less than, could it be, would it, could it hit eight point three tomorrow?
I doubt, no, because they've been watching it.
Okay.
I mean, literally, they're looking at it, it's just like you can look up the price of the barrel of oil right now.
Okay.
They they know where the electric rates are this week, so I've I've been in touch with them. It's not likely to go below the eight point three of Unitil.
Okay, so between eight point three and eight point eight?
Yes, eight point nine.
Alright, well, eight for eight point eight, at least eight point eight.
Yep, yep, so that that's the next step, they'll actually go go for pricing tomorrow.
Excellent.
So I have a supplier that I get my and uh my electric from.
Yep, you're a you're a third-party supplier.
Supplier.
Yep.
Uh, but I can opt out of them anytime.
You can.
So I can opt into whatever.
You can.
Yeah, okay.
You will not be automatically enrolled. In the program because you are with a third-party supplier.
But I can opt in.
You can opt in.
When I get the postcard.
Correct.
Okay.
You can opt in.
Yeah, okay.
I'm all I'm saying is that you have to be, you'll have to be getting your power from Eversource.
Yeah, delivery.
Um, no, you're, you have to be, you have to be getting your energy from Eversource for you to be automatically enrolled.
Oh, automatically, okay.
If you're with a third-party.
Yeah.
You get the, you get to choose to enroll using an opt-in.
Alright, and that will be on the card.
It'll be on the card.
Okay.
And actually, um, they said customers on third-party don't actually receive a card until its their term comes up.
Hmm.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. On the original paperwork we got.
Yeah.
Third-parties don't receive a card until your term is up and they actually, I, they know when your term is up, cause they'll know which party you're with, so.
So I'm not eligible to opt in?
You are eligible, cause anybody can call and opt in.
You can, yeah, but see, like, they don't know, um, you might have a termination fee.
I have none.
Okay, but that you could, right?
Yeah, right, I agree, yeah.
People, anybody could.
Some do, yeah.
Um, and so I I I don't think that they, right, they, I I didn't know that they wouldn't even notify.
That's what they said on the original, it might be wrong, cause like he says he doesn't have a termination.
I'll I'll find out that, if that's the case or not.
I'm sure there are other people like myself.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought the original said that they would not receive it until their termination date came up.
I'll find out.
Thirty days before you were gonna get one of them cards, is what they said, but maybe.
But if 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 they don't get the card, we can put instructions on our website to say, to say, if to opt in, just do these steps to opt in.
We can communicate this. Yeah, we can communicate this fairly crystally with, once we know what the rate is.
Exactly.
We can tell people, this is what's, this is what's happening.
Dana, do you want to speak to the new website for the energy committee?
Um.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we are, we are, I mean, I guess just to say, we have had a website for ev- for quite a while there, it's dunbarton-energy.org or something like that and. And we're gonna mothball that and just convert over to uh se- essentially a section of the town website.
Which I've already set up.
And, yeah, Lean has actually set that up and and so we'll be migrating all of our material over there, it'll be easier to manage. There's no reason to be paying an extra cost for a third-party website for the energy committee, so that that's what.
It'll be one click away to get, you know, rather than going to your site, you'll be on a Dunbarton site, it'll be one.
Yeah, and it was still a click away, and if you go look now, you'll actually see energy and energy committee, I think there's two line items there, so.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Yeah.
That could look confusing at the moment, just because we're.
Yeah, I've gone to that and it's, all I see is the energy committee.
Okay, yeah.
And the meeting dates, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll we'll be converting over so that we're we're right off the town. We'll we'll be using the town website services.
Cool.
Yeah.
And that doesn't cost anything more for the town for us to do that.
No, and we can keep adding new tabs, new committees and it's obviously.
And while Dana's here, you've amended the warrant article with the um additional grants we've cut off for the solar panels.
Yeah, um, can I just, I want one thing on the community power thing, um, just to clarify. I don't have any extra work to do, other than maybe put something on the news of the homepage, all that postcard.
Mm-hmm.
Phone calls.
That's not fitting for you.
Yeah, they managed, they managed all of that for us.
Yeah.
Yes, I I I will want to work with you, just, I mean, I know I have some access to the website now, but. We'll wanna, we'll wanna just do some communication to the residents that what, you know, what's happening, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He, I mean, there's probably even a bunch of people that'll get this thing in the mail and may throw it away too, so we.
Even Donna here might be able to help with some of that too.
Yeah, she's the expert and that's who I've.
Donna right down here.
I've included her in sending this e- email so that we can make sure we get.
Yeah, so, so.
To get started.
I'll uh, the only thing I would ask is if, you know, if there's any communication needs I have, I'll just say, hey, how do I go ahead and do this?
Yeah, and we'll show you once and I'm sure you'll be fine.
Yeah.
The other thing I brought to the board's attention was the fact that um down at the solar panels, you were trying to get the panels all up and running.
Yes.
We had a couple of panels that weren't working and once they get that corrected, then we're gonna start working on the repairs that they need to do. Kind of a step process.
Yeah.
Dave shared a a a strategy with me, which is, which basically I had mirrored the same thing to him and I think we're all on the same page, as far as how do we handle. Um, future repairs with non-repairs.
Mm-hmm.
And I like his, like his approach and I'd just like to say, I'm, I was thinking the same thing.
Okay, good.
And what is that? I don't know if I'm.
Well, we're we're gonna go after, we'll sugar start with and keep asking them.
Yep.
And if we get to the, we get to the fourth hour and we don't have for the eleventh hour. And we don't have the ability to see that they're gonna fix it, we'll get an estimate from a different company.
Oh.
And then approach them with taking that off of our final bill.
Okay.
But we're gonna give them notice in advance, so it's not when the bill is due, if it comes to that, but we've got all, we've got another year now, basically.
For them to fix it.
Yeah, there are three issues that I'm aware of right now, one of them is there's one panel that's just out, they have a warranty part already in, they just need to schedule someone to come do it. There's another panel that's underproducing by thirty percent, so it's still producing at seventy percent, not a huge deal, but I want them to look that up. And then there's the settling, which is causing some physical interference.
Yeah.
Um, there, those are the three things that I'm.
Yeah.
That I'm aware of. And we we just, we want them to address those, they did, they did already, um, there were ten panels that were out at one point, a whole row. Along the bottom, bottom right front and they did come out and find a corroded connector, so it. I guess weather had gotten in there and it corroded the connector and caused that to be out, now those ten have been, those have been online for more than two to three months now. Uh, since I brought it to their attention. Uh, and we had a failure of the reporting module that's on the outside of the recycle center. Um, so you have to stay on top of this, right, because they're not, they're not watching this and so I'm watching it and.
Good.
And but the, when the reporting thing went down, then I couldn't see, there's, I couldn't see the status of any of the panels. And then all of a sudden it came back up and I'm like, oh, there's eleven panels dark and there's one of them under reporting, so that's, that allowed us to go after those other things.
Well, one, one good thing is uh Dana's been watching that, he has got a good communication with them and they are responding to some of those things, so.
Thank you for watching that.
Yeah.
We still have the link up on our website too, which is nice, it's nice to click on and see.
Yeah, can you, you.
Yeah, you can still see it.
Occasionally you go there, you you can see the dark one.
Yeah, oh, okay, I haven't looked lately, but it has been interesting to watch.
There's one little black hole in the middle of the hundred and sixty panels.
Yeah, and it's not the panels that are touching each other either.
Oh, that one, the one that's out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's away from the ones that are rubbing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. I think that's all I have, Dana.
Yeah, so I, you must have brought it up at the last meeting on the solar, that we we actually were fortunate to find out that there is an eighteen thousand, approximately five hundred dollar.
I give a little credit for that.
Well, I, I.
Yes, yes, that was, that was great.
I kinda knew, we weren't paying full price, I knew.
No, I just couldn't get her to commit to that, the writing and it's like.
But see, they never, they never informed us back then, this is back in twenty twenty or so.
That they got the rebate, that's actually.
That they, that they got this, yes, so that was, that was great to find out, I had, they didn't let us know back then.
No, in fact, the rebates went by the wayside, I didn't think we were gonna get it.
No, we we don't get it, it just takes off and sell price.
But nobody stated stop that.
Correct, they got the money.
Yeah.
They got the money, um, but in the contract, we were smart when we signed that contract back in twenty nineteen. That said, if there's any additional grants, rebates, a hundred percent of it comes to us. Granted, state solar didn't, doesn't get the benefit of that, so that's a, that was a great thing to have in that contract, cause I wouldn't be surprised if they were like. Oh, darn, I can't believe we said we'd give it all to them, so, so now our purchase price.
They obviously stopped ma- doing that program, cause it wasn't lucrative.
Yeah, they're not, yeah, they're not doing.
And we have the option of not to accept the uh buy.
That's true.
And that's, that to me, that's the biggest uh gain we have, or thing we can hold over if they don't repair.
Well, it is, but like Dana and I pointed out to me, she said that's, you know, that system will, it's probably already paid for itself, we want the small amount.
Yeah. So Dana and I will work.
Just charge them thirty-two thousand for leasing the land, that's all.
Yeah. So so Dana and I will work on kind of a financial analysis, so that when the warrant article comes up at town meeting, we'll be able to say, no, this is a smart financial thing to do.
Well, if the gravy train comes next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, all the years after until like.
Exactly, no, I, it's.
Yeah.
We start really making the dollars next year.
When you don't have to pay the the ten thousand dollars a year lease.
That's what it is.
And I don't think Dana should, or be, even though they're not in the pitch of the panels and all those systems are all warranted by the dates from the manufacturer.
Right.
Yeah, right, twenty-five years on the inverters and on the panels themselves.
It'd be nice to get that manufacturer information so that we have it when we own it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll have all that.
Because, yeah, just so we know who to call, what.
Yeah, I know they're, I know they're N N-phase microinverters, they're, they're a big player in the, in the solar market, I don't know what the panels themselves are, those are. Wouldn't be surprised if they're Chinese, um. But we'll find, we'll find that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
What else you have for us?
That's it, I think.
That's it, and you're running for selectman.
I am running for selectman.
Okay.
Yes.
Sounds good, Dana, thank you for coming in tonight to help out with those.
Yes, wonderful.
Um, did I need to sign anything official?
Form.
We made the motion, wasn't there a form we needed to sign?
Yes, it's the flag on it.
Yeah, but it's, it's just the motion on both of these flags.
Other than it would be the minutes that they would have, that they want.
I think you're gonna need to give them a copy of these meeting minutes as soon as you see them.
Yep. I can do a formal letter and have someone notarize it.
I would think, um, do the motion as a formal letter and notarize it, because our meeting minutes are not gonna be for two weeks.
Available for two weeks, if that's what they need.
So she'll do the meeting, she'll do the um.
Extract.
Formal motion.
Correct.
And get it uh stamped.
Okay, cause there's, there is, there is a possibility, um, Emily mentioned to us, uh, who's with Standard Power, that they, the company who's. Allowing us to sign a contract to buy power may want to see this official motion that was approved by us.
Usually they do.
Yeah.
So we'll give them this sealed motion and we'll also give them the, a copy of the official minutes once we have them.
Okay, that sounds good.
Cause we approve those in our following meeting.
Okay.
But the motion can go tomorrow or.
Go forward, yeah.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll keep you posted tomorrow.
Okay.
First you.
Yep. Getting down to him here.
And he's actually.
He's down a little bit, he's under.
Under seven with the art wa- warrant articles.
Yep, Brandon, why don't you come up? Yep, Brandon, why don't you come up? And, uh, we'll start right in on the here stuff here.
And selectmen have a copy of the, uh, the warrant and the.
And we do, we do warrant, our, our copies here.
Is number ten on page four.
Eight point eight.
Brandon, how should I pronounce your last name?
I don't read like.
You said it three different ways tonight already.
Ah, Scotland, sorry.
Scotland? Scotland, Scotland, like this.
You're a good name, Dave.
Yeah, say whatever I want.
So, uh, a few weeks back, Brandon emailed me with some information that he was pursuing a, uh, grant for some equipment that did not come with the ambulance, and it was a, a very, uh, nice thing to see him, you know, be so motivated to do that, but he also.
What do you mean nice? We didn't see warrant articles from their last chief for the first three years.
Um, but ultimately, the reason for the article today is that in the event the grant does not come in at a hundred percent, then he, the only way to withdraw from the ambulance fund is through the town meeting vote, so he's requesting the, the grant amount, but he will be pursuing a grant as well, so in, in the event they get fifty percent, a hundred percent, then this will not be taken out of their funds.
When will the grant be decided? Uh, so good question, um, the, in order to file for this grant, you have to be one of two things, either, uh, um, a tax exempt entity such as a municipality, the Town of Dunbarton, or a nonprofit. And so there's two different, um, there's two different foundations that I'm looking at. One of them is the Gary Sinise Foundation. Um, there's a very high success rate for smaller agencies, particularly volunteer agencies, um, that can award it things. Um, and then the other one is, uh, Firehouse Subs. The difference between the two of them, the Gary Sinise Foundation doesn't have a cap on the total amount that you can request, uh, the, the Firehouse Subs Foundation does, so it would be a, a partial award if we really get it. I think the ceiling on it is about twenty thousand dollars. Um, I was speaking with Chief Ramblard and he does have some equipment that, you know, he could benefit from, uh, getting on grants as well. Uh, the downside with these, uh, with these grants is that you can only apply for one within a calendar year if you're doing so from the same entity, so I had the conversation with him, uh, and I deferred to him to apply for something if he would like to on behalf of the Town of Dunbarton, and I spoke with our firefighters association to be able to apply for these as a nonprofit, to be able to be awarded the equipment and donate it to the fire department in that fashion, so essentially it allows, um, both of our departments to potentially be able to benefit from, you know, from even one of these grants for what we're looking for. Um.
Out of the box thinking, that's great.
Yeah, so my, you, you know, like me said, my, my intention for this is to, to move forward with the warrant article, to potentially spend this money if needed, um, with full intent of exploring all grant options before any of that would be spent.
Sure. Sounds like a good way to do it.
And the funds that he's asking for are from the ambulance funds, so we just bought.
Right, so it's zero to the taxpayer.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thing is, if we expend the dollars and then the grant is, comes after.
Then it just doesn't take the money out of the checking account.
Okay.
Um, there's another one in here for you also?
Yeah, the other one was one that I think we had discussed, uh, when we first met, which is for, uh, that's a CIP spend for, uh, the replacement vehicle for the command car.
Yeah.
Um, initially we had talked, uh, I think it was somewhere in the seventy-five thousand dollar range.
Plus other accessories.
Yeah, I, I wound up speaking with vendors, um, for everything that we need to put the vehicle together with the cabin chassis. Um, everything is either a sole source purchase or, um, a state bid price, uh, and the total that I was able to probably was about eighty-eight thousand. Uh, to be just underneath that, I'm hopeful, um, to be able to spend less than that. And so there's, like, there's a little bit of wiggle room, I, I have, I contact with, uh, a vendor who might be able to actually build a command box for the back of it for, for much cheaper than, um, like I said, the price on it, so.
Yeah. Well.
And that would be article nine that he proposed a few days back.
So you just have to emulate from seventy-five to eighty-eight?
Seventy-five to eighty-eight.
Well, the town manager likes accurate estimates.
And, uh, we've got zero.
Starting to buy some that they don't have enough funds.
Zero impact on that, we have enough.
Yeah, that one would be coming from the capital reserve.
Okay.
Whereas the other one's coming from the ambulance funds.
Okay.
And to, to clarify on the ambulance fund purchase as well, the, the equipment that we have in here, um, not so much of a, uh, a misconsideration for when the ambulance was, was moved forward last year, um, but more of a consideration for an increase in service. Um, so traditionally, uh, we haven't operated at the paramedic level, um, doing so typically requires, uh, some more equipment, uh, different capabilities, so the, the equipment that's on here is, um, just to touch on it, uh, a major venous pump to be able to administer different medications, uh, in different fashions, uh, which is done at the paramedic level, um, a safe to be able to contain the controlled substances that we have, uh, on it, or that we're gonna get on in agreement through Concord Hospital. Uh, and then the last one is a respiratory ventilator, um, which can be used at the A E M T and paramedic level, but to allow us to treat, uh, better, uh, some more aggressive respiratory type emergencies.
So the, uh, E M T we're hiring will be able, based, operated at his highest level of training?
Yes, so E M Ts, A E M Ts and paramedics, whichever, uh, whichever we hire in this per diem role. Um, these, the, these equipments will, uh, the equipment here will allow them to operate at the highest level of their training, where um, each year when the ambulance, or every two years when the ambulance is inspected by the State of New Hampshire, by the Bureau of V M S, it's inspected to operate at a certain, uh, normal operating level, if you will. Uh, and our normal staffing and operating level has been as, at the highest, the A E M T level. Uh, now that we have myself on staff, um, uh, another, uh, paramedic who's gonna come back and wants to operate in a per diem fashion, will actually go back and request a re-inspection, uh, to ambulance, to get the ambulance up to the paramedic level.
Excellent. And what about the per diem, is that per diem E M T?
So per diems, I have, uh, I have four people, um, potentially five that I've spoken with who are interested in, uh, in this position. Um, when I have to figure out of the pay rates, the, the initial rate, um, as I heard Chief Ramblard mention earlier, uh, the initial rate as a one-time fee generally doesn't work well when you have different levels of providers, particularly where E M T is the entry level, A E M T is, is several more months of training, uh, and a lot more access to the pants life support, and then the paramedic level, which is basically another two years and, you know, several hundred hours of clinical time. There's, there's big educational gaps and differences between those things, so, um, my plan is to try and introduce different pay rates for each of those certifications. Um, of the four to five, uh, folks that I've spoken with who are interested in filling a per diem role, um, three of them are A E M Ts, one of those A E M Ts is in the middle of paramedic school, and the other two are paramedics.
Did we make a motion on the E M T version of that?
No, we left that, no, we just budgeted with a sum and then left it up to the chief to develop.
So we did forty hours at a rate of, uh, per diem E M T.
Correct, but because we haven't.
Around thirty dollars an hour, I think it was, or?
Yeah, it was twenty.
Twenty-two, twenty, twenty, okay.
It was twenty, yeah.
But the fact that we haven't, we're not, haven't filled that position yet, that's gonna give him some, like, a little bit of wiggle room to increase the rates going forward for.
Yeah, but what's gonna, how's it gonna affect your budget, cause you wouldn't get forty hours at that rate if your budget's set at twenty.
Yeah, I think not, uh, not filling the position until after the town meeting is complete, um, that saves us the first two and a half months. Um, you know, to potentially be able to increase that rate effectively, yeah.
And then next year you're gonna adjust your budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
So we'll just see, uh, we'll expect to see, uh, pay scale for those different levels of qualifications.
Yeah, I was just worried we might have to change something, cause if you hired somebody and the, the pay scale's obviously gonna be different for those different levels.
Right.
And there's only so much money in the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I will, I think we'll be able to make it work. Um, and the, the budget is gonna be flexible too, uh, you know, if we hire in an E M T, which is gonna be at a lower pay rate, and we're paying them nine dollars, and then later in the week paying a paramedic that, you know, that higher level rate, it's gonna flex based on the availability of these folks and who's in that role, you know, five days a week or four days a week.
Certain hours for this person, certain hours for that person, but it really should be covered.
Yes.
With a minimum of an E M T on that.
Yeah.
And we get different money collected, um, if we have paramedics on there versus E M Ts as well, right?
Uh, so not necessarily if it's staffed with a different level of provider, but if a different level of care is provided.
Okay.
So there were three different billing rates, um, one of them is the B L S rate, it's basic life support, uh, that's our lowest entry level rate. Uh, the, uh, then there's an advanced life support rate that is split into two different levels, you have A L S one and A L S two. To get to the A L S two level, you generally have to have a paramedic, um, it generally deals with a sicker patient that receives, uh, three or more of a different medicate, or different medications, or three or more doses of the same medication, um, and, and more advanced level skills, so uh, in, in order to get to that A L S two level, I typically have to escalate at the paramedic level.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, but at the same time, we'll also, uh, you know, when we have those cases and we have paramedic availability, um, this is gonna reduce the number of times that we have to request a paramedic intercept from another jurisdiction and pay out for that service, um, as well.
So we'll keep money in-house.
We'll keep money in-house, we'll actually, we'll gain money, um, and we'll reduce spending out of the paramedic intercept line as well.
Now, we have a, that goes into, uh, like a, the fund, like the, a separate fund for the police department, for the firearm.
The ambulance fund.
Yes, it's not revolving the ambulance fund, right? Yeah, that, that, this initial warrant article requests those, those supplies.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I think that's all we have for you then, right, Brandon?
That's all you did.
We have some other warrants to go through, but I think that your warrants are all done.
Very good.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Of course.
Okay. This is what I was looking for. So, just a quick read through the rest of the warrants here, I think that, um.
Can I just speak on it?
Yeah, why don't we go right down through them, I think that.
Okay, there's been no changes to article four, five, six, seven, eight. They have been the same for the last two meetings.
Okay.
Uh, article nine, as you know, uh, was up, uh, just slightly from the original quote that we had in there, and that is from the capital reserve, the funds are there.
Article ten.
Yeah. And then article ten is new, and, um, it was just explained by Brandon how that's gonna go through if we have to use it. This is the only way he can withdraw from the ambulance fund is getting a vote of the, um, legislative body. And then there's no changes to eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. I have a placeholder for, uh, article fifteen, which is for the land, that's still up in the air. I think, Dave, you've had some other thoughts of how you want to approach this?
Yeah, I think that, um, we might reword this a little bit if it does come through, but if we don't get the dollar amount on the land within the next week or so, we'll push that, uh, to next year's warrant article.
Well, for this year, okay. Uh, no change to article sixteen, which is to discontinue the elected road agent, and the, the change in the dollar amount on number seventeen was lowered to the thirty-one, five ninety-two based on the grant that we are allowed to apply to our purchase price.
Great.
Uh, the new, other two not, new articles on the back, we had a request from the transfer station supervisor to add a, um, mower attachment, um, for the skid steer, and he got the, um, actual quote and prices for that, so they're able to insert that. And that's basically, uh, to see if the, what the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of four thousand, three hundred forty dollars to purchase a new skid steer mower attachment and to fund this appropriation by withdrawing four thousand, three hundred forty dollars from the transfer station vehicle and for equipment, capital reserve fund established in two thousand fourteen. No amount is to come from taxation in twenty twenty-five. Pretty basic.
Yeah, that's the only one. And what he did, uh, provide the quote.
Yeah.
I thought the C C Lee, but in looking at the email he had, so I sent it to him.
Yeah.
And it's a little bit cheaper than our original thing, so.
And the last one, I met with the board assessors on Tuesday night, um, they had received a recommendation from M R I, who is, um, oversees several towns in the state of New Hampshire, with the, uh, a lot of the rebounds that are currently going on through the different communities. They're finding that the ratio of the current market is very low, and if this is not something that is considered at town meeting, then anyone who qualifies for elderly exemption would have to wait a full year before the town could decide to vote on this. And the reason for the increase, I think you have the support in your package.
I do.
Dave, um, we're at fifty-seven point nine percent, so if the, the goal of a re- statistical rebound is to bring us up to a hundred percent. If you have someone who has a, a modest home of two hundred thousand dollars and their values almost double based on the statistical rebound, because the elderly exemption is set at a credit to their, uh, assessment, then they would still be under and they would have more than double on their taxes due for the whole calendar year. Now currently, we only have one person that qualifies on a count, uh, spreadsheet of six towns, we were the lowest. Um, we basically eliminated the highest town that was, uh, listed, and these are all communities around Dunbarton. Um, and then we did an average and we found that the recommendation from M R I was exactly, was spot on within a couple of hundred dollars, so the, the board was in support of this. We have, uh, one individual who's, um, in the real estate market, and she said that this would be very fair for a consumer that annually might only, uh, receive thirty to thirty-nine thousand dollars a year, that they would then qualify if their assets do not exceed the threshold, the increase, and be able to continue with their, uh, elderly exemption. Still puts us at the lowest, but it brings up.
This is just taking care of our, um, of, of warrants.
Allows them to stay in the home.
Warrant coming to people, I think it's a good thing.
Take care of me. I get over there. I like where it's up at the four hundred, they've got a big, big consumption.
Yeah.
I think that's, this is a brand.
Yep, so I think that provision, and like, there's no dollar value to the public there, so.
Correct.
Will they, will they speak on it? I'd like to have someone.
Yeah, John will probably speak on it, but I can ask, um, I'll ask them all, but make sure one of them is available.
Okay.
Okay, warrants.
Now we're into the operating budget.
Okay. So, after running, uh, updated expenses and the slight changes that were made at the January ninth meeting, um, I've added the change amounts in the column six, so you could get a better idea of what those dollar amounts are for each department, and I don't know if you wanna go, the only two changes that were made, um, last week was, um, you reduce the legal for planning board by two thousand, and you reduce the selectmen's legal by four thousand, that was done last week.
Yeah.
And then on page four, uh, what is it? Cemeteries, um, you increase, uh, the budget by four thousand seven thirteen, they've had a flat budget for, uh, several years now. But there were two items that have been encumbered, and based on the auditor's recommendation, it's not the proper way to do it, so we've increased that budget by that, so it was a slight increase, cause there were other things that had decreases, so an overall increase of two thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars.
So I don't think we need to go back down through this?
I don't think we do, and then the other piece was, uh, putting funds in, um, office equipment and repairs, we increased it four thousand to accommodate, uh, fireproof cabinet in the event she makes, she goes forward with that purchase.
Looks like your surplus at the end of the budget was three eighty-eight?
Yeah, it kind of, it dropped, it would have been decreasing that column, um, actual, which is number four. Um, we've had a few, um, twenty twenty-four batches of, um, payables, because there were services rendered in twenty twenty-four, so the.
There's only coming from the transfer station this afternoon.
Pardon?
Twenty twenty-four, uh, transfer station about three o'clock sent some.
Was it fuel, he's been waiting for fuel?
No, fuel was, uh, repairs, there's two bills.
Two bills. Oh, that went to repairs from Ed Camden?
No, it's in covering the space, waiting for, waiting for a bill, and he talked to Brian Pike about his last fuel bill, he's waiting on that.
Okay, so that's gonna come down even more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, he sent an email.
I didn't see it, I don't get the emails.
About three thirty.
I didn't get it either.
Yeah, you guys are, you were on.
I got, I saw.
The selectmen are on.
I left them.
But must be in there in the box. It was late this afternoon.
But was it separately or a single select?
No, it was a, my selectman email.
Oh, it came in late today, okay, I will be there.
Yes, yeah, so, yeah. I just wanna make sure you're aware of that.
No.
That's when I was in handling, I think.
Yeah, when you were signing. I, I looked at my emails at that time.
So it looks like only nine percent?
Um, well, if, if we use any excess surplus from the operating budget and the excess, uh, surplus from the revenues, I do wanna point out that there was a slight increase, and based on when I was reconciling October and November and December, I found that the export from the town clerk only included thirty thousand, when it should have been eighty-something, so I increased our actual revenue another fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah, it looks like one more higher, I would.
Yeah. So the, the second to the last page shows that our projection, or our proposed budget is four hundred eighteen thousand, four ninety-one higher than the twenty twenty-four budget, and that equates to twelve point six percent increase. That's using the, um, old, well, that's a percent, um, if you go to the second section to the left at the bottom, um, the actual, this has been updated through this week, but there'll be more of a, an upgrade, update next week, where the actual budget for twenty twenty-four was three million, three nineteen, seven twenty-nine, the actual spent was three million, two oh five, seven eighty-two, which lapses a hundred and thirteen thousand, nine forty-seven. So I'd say the board had a, a very good year as far as projecting a, a good budget for themselves. Um, that is a lapsing amount as of today, uh, the D R A revenues were adjusted to point one point four, three one million. Our actual versus the, um, revised D R A amount came in at one million, seven oh six, zero one six, and that gives us an X. And that gives us an excess surplus of two hundred and seventy-four, five oh seven. So if you combine the two. And you apply it to the four hundred and eighteen thousand four ninety-one increase, that really only gives us a thirty thousand thirty-seven. Increase, which is nine percent. So it drops it down a little bit.
So if we go back through this and take thirty thousand out of it all.
Yeah.
We're flat.
Yeah.
All start splashing.
Well, we do have a seven hundred dollar reduction tonight, so.
I'm just kidding.
Okay. So then on the old, uh, last change. I did include the projected revenues that we had worked with. So we have a twenty twenty-five. Projected operating budget.
Aileen, one thing just before I forget it.
Yeah.
Nowhere in this budget did we provide for voting machines, right?
Correct.
No, she actually increased her budget in the town clerk.
Her voting machine, so. Not, not the item she's looking for for the computer. I'm talking about counting machines.
She in the election, she increased, oh.
What did we talk about? What did we do last time? I thought we had covered it or something or talked about it.
We're thinking about it, but we never did.
We were gonna take it out of the maintenance fund. That's what we're gonna do.
She budgeted extra six thousand one hundred dollars. We only have one election in twenty twenty-five.
No.
No, election machine, buying a machine.
Yes, and she put it in that line for election expenses and meals. She added six thousand one hundred dollars for a machine.
Yeah, but the machine she's talking about is the one that we're talking about ordering when we buy that state machine.
We're talking about the.
Voting machine, with the ballots.
That's right. That's what this is.
Counting.
Can you verify that whether I'm.
Yeah, absolutely. But that's what that's what our increase in this budget is.
I thought that was the one for all machine that she put in there.
Yeah, that's.
We're talking about accounting ballot counter.
Ballot counting machine is in here.
Just double check with her, just to make sure.
Okay.
Cause I I know that we've all talked about him and after coming home at three thirty last voting, I'm ready for one.
Yeah.
He goes, it turns a new selectmen right off of one and stays into the game, you know, cause. Get home at three thirty, get up and go to work at five thirty. It's, that's worth it.
I'm almost certain that this sixty-one hundred increase is to cover a machine that she had gotten two quotes.
See, I didn't think it was. I thought that was the one.
One was around five thousand, the other one was like seven thousand or seven thousand two hundred and she in budgeted in there. But I'll I'll double check for you.
I I would like to make sure we have some funds in there. If not, we'll use the maintenance fund.
Yeah, I I think.
If she, I don't know if she's still here. She probably is.
What are you thinking?
I think she's.
You don't think it was.
I think it's a little bit low. I think it's a little bit low on the estimate.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Because it's it's gonna have the same issue. There's gonna be a programming fee every election.
Yeah.
Paper we gotta buy. It's 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 a trail with that. And the problem is we have, I wanna make sure we buy the right one. That the state, I wanna make sure the state verifies it's the one that we wanna buy because.
We'll put you in charge.
Well, it was in limbo before. Last last fall, it was in limbo as far as which one was gonna be approved or not.
Yeah.
And what I don't wanna do is buy a machine then find out the state says they'll go on that one.
We're stuck with a machine.
But we also added four thousand for a filing cabinet that she's kind of on the fence with. That she may not want to pursue. And if she doesn't do that, then we have.
We have some dollars.
Six thousand and four.
I think you had already gone to like a show or something.
I went to, I went to the training, but it was only one council. You'd be the best guy.
That was like seven hundred, seven five hundred there, so. I'm agreeing with Mike with them programming it every time. We should have at least eight, nine thousand dollars in that.
Yeah.
Why not? And then every year after that, a couple thousand dollars in that line.
It depends upon the elections for the year.
Two or three thousand.
Cause then we reprogram every time. Yeah.
Yeah, if you want, just check with her so we can see.
Okay.
And whether it's in our maintenance fund or in hers, we need to make sure that we have.
Okay, do you have any, do you want me to do that now?
No, no.
And you're gonna go through the.
Unless you want to, just because we don't wanna make changes last minute.
No, I I think, you know, it's really maintenance, not really maintenance. I'd rather.
We have a few things to look to go over in the mailbox. I can step out.
Yeah, why don't you do that? I'll go to the mailbox.
Did you have any other questions? It was nice to find the extra fifty some odd thousand in the clerk's revenue and.
Line thirty, make it even.
Have we decided how much we're gonna apply your tax against tax, a hundred percent against taxes on the surface?
Well, if you use it towards this operating budget, there is nothing there to apply to taxes. And then that is also determined in October when we set the tax rate. If you find there's an influx, if there's money, well, I don't think there's going to be. The state is really.
So we don't need this revenues or expenditure that's gonna go down?
No, that was just to point out that we have a change, one change of fifty-seven thousand increase. And then the other thing that we need to touch on is with the articles that are on here today that are tax impact. The dollar amount of those warrant articles is three hundred sixty-one thousand six fifty, which is a forty-five cent increase. So if you add that to the operating budget, I don't have the numbers for the state or the county or the local pool. But we're looking at last year's tax rate for everything. All parts was twenty-six thirty-eight. This this increase here is thirty cents. The other articles that are represented under three through four through nineteen is an additional forty-five cents. So we're looking at twenty-seven twelve and that exclude the other three parts of the town.
All the articles only go up to forty-five cents?
It's on this break. Yeah, because.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be funny. This is, what's gonna happen is the valuation's gonna change. Our tax rate's gonna go down, but the tax, the tax payments will stay the same.
Yeah, yeah. If you haven't made any changes and they bring your rebound up or your assessment up, then theoretically, yes, your tax bill. Should stay about the same even at a lower dollar rate because your assessment's gonna go up.
Okay, check with her and I'll head on to the.
Please.
All right, moving on to mailbox items. We have a quote from. Aloha Garage to repair the garage door window. Looks like the total is two eighty-five for the glass and the labor. We have Chipping John's brand new doors. Well, they're not John's anymore. They're Brandon's.
That is totally yes. You want the new, what the repaired one?
Yeah, I'll take the brand new one.
So without making emotions, we'll just do a consensus for repair.
Agreed.
Circle again, provide it for lean. Okay. Uh, we have a bill from Sentus here. That is a company that provides our. Our work clothing and uniforms. Apparently Woody's been notifying the shipper. That brings them out to them as well as making marks on their paperwork. That paperwork's not matching up with the paperwork that. We're getting in the office to pay the bill. They're not making the proper changes on it. Woody has already contacted the office. I'm gonna follow up and have him call them one more time to get them to make sure to. Make those changes so that we.
Not being paid.
We don't look like we're a bad payer.
Okay.
Sousa signs. We held off on the check for Sousa signs. There's been some talk and an email to us about making town of Dunbarton white in the letter. Chief, did you see this yet?
I don't.
Come on over.
Do you guys think we should have them just furrow it out so it goes past those vents and make that arch again? Give some definition to that.
There's a sign that they're producing now. We had approved an original sign. I'll show you a picture of. Which looked quite a bit better than that with an arc on the top of it.
Yeah.
Looked much nicer, we thought, but this vent here is an operating vent. You clear that air out of the garage. I wanted to make sure that. Well, John wanted to make sure it didn't hit, so they reduced the size of the sign.
Yeah.
But you really can't put something on this side, this side unless you did police and fire or something. The arch was real pretty, I thought. It covered this piece and the whole arch.
Yeah, we go back to that and just furrow it out to.
Well, that's what I was just talking about. I don't feel like blowing off against the sign.
But I think the question now is just the color of the lettering.
Yeah, the color of the lettering.
Looks so tiny and bland and bland.
I know.
Has anybody talked to, um, a construction company that look at reusing the size of that dent? Or do they think that they need the full opening of the dent?
John thought we needed a full vent in there. Had the vehicles in there.
Someday that's gonna be all vented. He's gonna want a whole vent system for the exhaust.
When they put a new roof on that building.
Second floor, quarters, sleeping quarters.
So lean on the sign, just make it white, I guess, on the lettering.
We're okay with that? Just white?
Not much else we can do at this point.
Right, y'all.
And if if they change the bill, they decide on the venting, that will.
Change, change another sign again? Is it gonna be fluorescent paint though? I wanna go in the dark.
Yeah, my notes on the budget, she agrees. It was for one of those machines that we're borrowing. If we have to buy it.
So that's seven K I see there in our notes.
Yeah, for the one for all.
One for all.
Yeah, not the ballot counter.
Can I draw one more time? Here, this check goes on top.
The question that came up is whether we could buy it from dollars for a vote counting machine.
So you're you're missing that point, Lee. That's the one for all.
Yeah, that's what she just said.
So it's, that's what we thought too. So it's not for a voter counting machine. I have to leave it at three thirty. I'm ready for the counting machine. You know, we've had the last couple of them pretty long and we're leaving them really late and I think it's time. But I wanna make sure it's in our budget somewhere. We decide to do it, June we have the money.
Well, if we're leaving the building and maintenance budget at its regular.
I could drop the building maintenance ten thousand, put ten thousand into it.
And the equipment in another line?
Yes, the office equipment line. Dave, there's just take ten, keep the budget flat. We'll keep the numbers the same. Just shift ten thousand from our maintenance.
I'd like to put it in her line, so if it doesn't.
She has rights to spend the whole thing if it's in her lines. If something comes up and she wants something else, she is the department head, has the authority to spend that. So I just wanna make sure that the money gets held in a separate account.
Well, it's office equipment. No, no, it's an office equipment, it's voting equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I wanted.
I just think we gotta move it out of the maintenance line. This is not maintenance.
I guess a question for Jennifer. Are we gonna be mandated to buy this one for all machine in twenty twenty-five?
Unless the state legislature repeals the law, we're mandated to acquire one to use, yes.
And that's the price you got was for seven thousand dollars?
It was, I think it was a range of something like four thousand to seven thousand. It was like.
Well, so my question is, is the the patch that's on the side of this sign for the fire department defined what? So the reason I bring this up is because I threw, going through the desk and looking at everything and realizing what we have out there. This patch is an old patch that hasn't been used at the department for years. So. As an example, that red patch that's on top is what's currently on the side of the command card. It's just in a different, in a different color makeup. But that's the current, you know, there are stickers for department members, the patches that are on. Anybody who has a uniform, the red patch that's on top is is what's in current use.
So I'm sure we can get Sousa changing at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, this, yeah.
Okay, and in, yeah, and to to give it some modernization, one of the things that I was considering was potentially redoing the patch. Again, this is a much older one. This one's been in place. The the red one, I think, has been in place since, since I started. It's been eighteenish years or so.
Okay, that's the one I got.
Do we, do we need the patches on there at all?
I think it does make it more.
Okay.
We've already stripped of anything else looking nice, don't we?
Yeah.
We probably won't do it. So yeah, if you get with Lee, just we'll update that on the table.
So don't send them the check before, until that's changed. Did Gary get the proof?
Yeah, get the proof first.
Yeah, I've actually already started working with somebody to to look at a like a redesign of the hatch to to come up with something.
And if that gray is a really light, light gray and and will show or maybe a fluorescent gray. And that, you know, that.
Where's that Dunbar?
There, where's that Dunbar?
Yeah.
If it's light enough, you could leave it gray. It doesn't have to be white.
Is that what it is? It's gray?
I think it's like a light, light gray.
Okay.
It's hard to tell.
It's black and white, so it shows.
Okay, so confirm that it's a very light gray or change it to white.
Yeah. Yeah, Leo.
Just curious, what color is the sign itself?
Black.
Oh, black.
Black on a gray building, which will act that nice. At least, well, it's a black and white picture, so it's what we're thinking. Could be dark gray.
What about red lettering?
Uh, some of the lettering in their badges are gonna be red, I think.
Oh, okay.
So. And that'll make the police department jealous.
Well, underneath, underneath there, underlined.
Red and blue.
Underlined, one's blue, one's red.
Yeah. Okay, Jennifer. So lean, if we put it in her budget, can we earmark it just specifically for that or not?
Yeah, to let her know that she cannot allow to spend it.
I would think that if we put it, it'd be cleaner in her budget, not in our general budget, and it'd be earmarked specifically for that. Mic up pricing last time, they're around seventy-five hundred, seven thousand dollars for those voting machines. Plus you have to have those ones, you know, templated for the.
You have to have template, the programming and paper. And so I I'd say put ten thousand as a placeholder for that, then. I think you should be in the decision process. You should be the decision leader.
And we're gonna have the mic up, we just so you guys can make the decision together.
To make sure we get a, the one that the state's gonna be, who's gonna be happy with for ten years out from now.
I don't know how long they're good for and I just want it on the record that I am not adding that to my budget. I am not recommending it.
Right.
You can just have that on the record.
Yep. So selectmen just wanna put it in your budget case. We decide to buy one, it's under elections.
I just wanna make sure that we, we don't pick one that the state declares two years from now is.
I mean, I think we're gonna do with our due diligence and do our research.
Yeah, and if they change it three years, it's not gonna, uh.
Yeah, those are things to look at. How long is one machine?
I have expectancy.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the state certified them last time, which ones to use, so.
Right, there were, there were, and there were like, they had trial runs for one company. And I think the older one was actually not gonna be used. So it's, it's, it was something to hear.
Simplify, can you approve this expenditure from the building and maintenance or?
That's what we did last time when we were gonna buy it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you just do it as a building.
Don't touch the numbers and just leave them that way, but let Jennifer know that you guys will be pursuing this and that.
Yeah, I think it's time. I think anybody stays or takes them on it.
Why is she on the, huh?
No, I'm happy with her decision.
No, I I think her reasoning, if you wanna share your reasoning, why you're behind it or, or you wanna hold off for now. I don't wanna put you on the spot.
Well, one reason is I don't. I guess there's several reasons. One of them is by not, by having, even if we have a machine, say. I still need to make sure we have enough volunteers in case there's any issues with the machine. We only have one machine for a town our size. So if there's any issues, we're kinda stuck with hand counting anyway.
Well, you always have to hand count the over counts or under counts in the ratings. Those will have to be counted anyway. You're always gonna have some volunteers.
You're always gonna have some, but you would need more if suddenly there was a problem with the device. That's one reason. Another, it is such a huge expense. It's only a few times a year. I know I'm inconvenienced. As well, I was here till five AM, I think, last election. Maybe I didn't need to be here quite that late, but I was trying to wrap things up and. By that time in the morning, you're not thinking as clearly, you know?
Definitely an arc.
You know, so it's a really long day. I've looked at schedules of some towns that have machines. And they are starting at like five in the morning for a seven open poll. And, you know, they have a breakfast break at six or something. And then by six. And then at six PM, they apparently have enough volunteers, cause you still need counters. That there's maybe a second moderator who's briefing them all on what they're gonna do. So that they can start counting like right at seven, whereas we, you know, of course, pick up and shift over there after seven. Once the polls have closed. And there's, it's just still, and they're still there till at least ten or later, you know, depending. So it, to me, it didn't necessarily seem like a huge value add. And there's also a lot of controversy about them. You know, there's a lot of people that are just anti-machine. So I don't know that it's really worth pushing that.
Can we bring it up at town meeting? Just ask the question. And their other business, ask if there's a, uh. Show hands for those that might be interested in using a ballot machine versus campaign.
I like that idea. Just got a consensus from the feeling from the public too. It's a lot of people enjoy that, you know, our elections are like, for example.
My problem is the people that are enjoying it aren't the people that are coming there trying to do it.
No, but the thing is, we have a cohort of people who do accounting. They enjoy the counting. The only thing, my drawback of the machine is. If, you know how we match the numbers in, the matches, the number of people checked in, checked out, and the number of ballots, they all match. We we bring it to the. Last vote, one to one. If the machine counts. If the machine counts fifty over, there's no audit process to say fifty votes are all, are off. If it counts fifty under from the people who cast ballots, there's no check. And the thing is, when asked at the meeting, they said, no, we just blow, write it off. That's, that's, that's the solution and they, the manufacturer agreed with it. There is no process where you can go back and make sure that the voters who voted and the number of votes counted are the same. If the machine records it differently, whether it be fifty, hundred or one, they just write it off. And this is, this is as affirmed by the other town clerks at the meeting. That's what I, no, there's no, there's no balance, check. That's the only beauty of when you count votes by hand, we, we get it to the accurate, to the nth degree. And when we did a recount in, in the past, when we had recounts where, for elections in this town, when we went to Boe, our elections were spot on. The machines actually count, made mistakes and J R Hole was, was basically, the election was overturned and J R Hole became a state rep because Boe made a mistake in the machines. And so it does have impact on elections. Okay, that's all, that's all I'm gonna say about it, cause I, I know someone wants to go.
I was, I was interested to hear both, hear both sides of it. We're not set on buying one at this stage.
Cons, I think, I think we should approach it maybe a little bit slowly. I think we can budget for it, Dave. I think I'd like to get a consensus from my, from the town.
It's only January. You can't go much slower, it's been a couple of years. Go ahead, Leo.
Well, it's only been a year since it was, was a year ago, last fall, in, in last budget season, we brought up.
Yeah.
The problem with asking the, the, the uh, voters at the end of the meeting though is that you guys are there and you see everybody hits the door and there's a handful of people left to make that final decision.
Yeah.
But it would be to pursue it, you know, or to, I don't know.
I thought we were just gonna ask consensus on who would be interested in pursuing.
Yeah, whichever way you decide to.
I mean, I didn't think we were putting it as a warrant. No, but the thing is.
It's under.
General, general. But the thing is, I, I would ask moderator before he goes through the regular warrants to ask a consensus question.
If you wait till the end, you only gonna get a handful of people.
There's a general provision for questions at the end of it.
True, but the thing is, if you could promote that just so we can get a, a better, broader spectrum of people. Yeah, we're, I don't know, we, I think we should keep it open and as we go forward, but.
Ask on the town website.
Yeah, people, half the town doesn't even know we have the website.
Yeah, you're right there. Correct.
One other consideration for my department is it will actually add to the workload in all of the testing and the storing and the, the different, those memory cards or whatever that you have to then secure, but then the manufacturer says send them back, but then there's people getting sued over. They weren't maintained for X amount of time and got erased. You know, there's a lot of controversy about this, I don't know. And it will add, we may wanna consider having a, in election season, having somebody else in my office. I mean, obviously I need a deputy, but even with the town clerk and deputy, there's just so much.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Dave, I'd say we, we have a maintenance line, we could take out of the maintenance line if we decide to put on that pad. I'd say we could just pursue it a little bit, but not necessarily do it aggressively.
Jen?
Okay, number one.
In other towns, how many people do they have working on this? If what they have to vote, uh, they have counting machines and stuff, is it just the clerk or?
You mean in the preparation?
Well, preparation, the whole thing. Do they have other people to help?
Yeah, I don't know.
I would imagine, right?
He says he does, he just goes right to work.
Yeah, well, their, Boe is a bigger town, so they probably have more staff to begin with.
Right, so, but my point is, so just because we're smaller, we still need more help.
Susa signs.
Email for PD. Still have all these voters.
That's already.
By yourself.
Okay, I'm gonna move on. Uh, all the emails from the PD, we already did that one?
Yeah. PD recognition.
Employees, yep, we can go.
Did you guys get the lower doors from the building?
We did, it's in there as a proof. Good to go with that.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, the last thing I have here is uh, Mike Kaminsky giving Dunbar police chief's performance evaluation. And that was done this week on Tuesday.
Yes.
And it looks like the chief passed with flying colors. He appreciates working with our board, the communication between the select board and uh, Mike's indeed a total advocate for his staff, fully speaks and supports their uh, well-being, ensuring they receive recognition when due. Uh, required resources and opportunities to excel. So a good review for the chief, and we'll put that in his file.
You gotta sign that as a review of my work.
Last page here.
Last page. All of us or just us?
All of us.
So I'm dating today the twenty third.
And for the record, for the public record, uh, the chief's contract has a provision in there, his pay rate is based upon performance evaluations.
Good performance evaluation.
Right.
Okay, bringing back to um, town administrator, anything for you?
Are we gonna wanna do a workshop before the public hearing?
I don't think we need one. We just reviewed any changes we might have tonight. I don't see any big workshops needed for anything.
Okay.
I think that's not very straightforward.
I will have everything in final format. I have the MS six thirty six, which is the budget. All these numbers, now that they're final, we'll go into that um, Department of Revenue form. And that, it needs to be posted with the warrants, so that is ninety nine percent. I'm just waiting for, I'll be sending it on to uh, D R A for review of our language of the articles. Um, hopefully we don't have any major changes. And then uh, I'll be able to finalize the MS six thirty, six thirty six for you guys to sign.
Okay, so we're clear?
Now with the uh, public hearing for, for the budget, uh, that's when you, we sign.
February sixth.
Yeah, that's when we assign the uh, who's gonna speak on the warrants too.
Yeah, and then you vote on each warrant.
Jennifer, you have something still?
Oh, I just, some point, wanna swear in Chief Skolblin.
Oh.
I don't know.
We did the approval tonight, uh, right earlier, so.[1773.14]